Second.
Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have just a few items on our list tonight to report out in superintendent's report, and unfortunately, the first one is news that I've shared at our district-wide PTA meeting last week, that I've shared with this committee several times, and that I've shared with our employees and staff throughout the district. It's unfortunately not good news, and that is, the governor's budget, when it was released last week, revealed that we were going to have a huge deficit in the school department this coming fiscal year. So I wanted to share some information with the parents in the community so that they could understand exactly why this budget shortfall is happening. There has been a change in the foundation budget, which is the way that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education calculates the funding formula for each school, each community in the Commonwealth. And this most recent year, they actually changed how they calculate the amount of funding. And instead of looking at each district and identifying how many students qualify for free or reduced lunch, and using that metric in the formula, instead, they're using a new metric, which is called economically disadvantaged. And what it means for Revere in particular is, instead of receiving additional funding from the state for 78 percent of our students, we are going to receive additional funding for only 46 percent of our students. And that means that despite the fact that we have 170 new students in the district, which would typically mean a couple million dollars increase in foundation budget, the state has given us numbers through the governor's budget that represent over $2 million decrease in foundation funding. All in all, that gives us an over $4 million change in where we should be, where we've been according to calculations in the past, to where we're going to be next year. And that, of course, is a huge, a huge obstacle to overcome when we want to maintain the level of excellence in the Revere Public Schools. As I said to the teachers, we know that one of the reasons our schools, or one of the primary reasons our schools are so great is because of the awesome teachers and administrators and staff members who work here. It is the people who make changes in the lives of children. So our goal, as we work through this budget challenge, is to, you know, work to keep as many people as we can, and look at our deficit as a program cut instead of a people cut. And so we're going to be working hard. The school committee and I have met. We've had two meetings now about budget already. We're going to continue to work. We are working with our legislators, representatives, and senators at the State House, and working with the governor's office to try and get this corrected. I know that our, our teachers are working with the Massachusetts Teachers Association, and I know that the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees are all working with the legislators up on Beacon Hill to try and get this problem corrected. So we've made people aware of the problem, and now what we need to do is ask as many people who, who are willing to, to contact your representatives and your senators, and try to let them know that this is a matter that's very important to you, and you want to make sure that they take steps to try to help those districts, including Revere, that are negatively impacted by the new budget formula. In doing that, and over the next couple of months, we will be sharing as much information as we can, as it becomes available, with the community at large, and also with our teachers and our staff. And, you know, the school committee and I will certainly keep people updated as developments occur. We do have a meeting with the, um, why can't I, Speaker of the House, thank you, with the Speaker of the House scheduled for Monday, February 29th. And, you know, we'll be there to help share our thoughts with him. So just wanted to, you know, let me make sure people are aware that we are facing a challenge in terms of the budget this year. The next item on the list is, I'm going to flip it to actually Ms. Mokaba, who's going to talk to us about middle school visits and the lottery process.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Our middle school fifth graders visited all three middle schools. The tours began last week, February 1st, and will be finishing up this week. We had to postpone a few chores because of the snow. Paul Revere and Garfield Elementary will be touring our three middle schools tomorrow, and Beauchamp and Wayland will be heading to Garfield on Friday, the 12th. Our selection form should have gone home tonight, and are due on March 4th, Friday, March 4th. Shortly after that, we'll be crunching the data to determine if a lottery is necessary and which schools this pertains to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mokaba. So the next piece that I wanted to do was update the community on my SMART goals that I've been working on this year. As part of my entry plan into the district, I had to set goals, and I worked with the school committee on identifying and, thank you, Mr. Malone, and finalizing what those goals would be. And we, we settled on four goals that I would work on, mostly around my transition as a new superintendent in the district. But one of the pieces, one of, my first goal that I'll talk about is my superintendent's team student learning goal. And this is a goal that Ms. Mokaba and Mr. Malone and I have been working on together, and it has a number of action steps. I won't talk about all of them, but, you know, one of them, one of the action steps required that we make visits to all of the schools, and look into classrooms, and see what we see, and collect data on rigor. And we did our fall visits, and we have scheduled our spring visits, which are going to be starting in the, after the February vacation. And we're looking forward to getting back into classrooms and visiting with more teachers, and collecting even more evidence about the great work that's happening in our classrooms. But also identifying those areas that we can leverage, and especially where, you know, with the budget concerns that are coming up, we want to make sure that we're taking advantage of every opportunity to help children excel. So we'll be looking, again, to work with teachers to identify where they think we can, you know, leverage some student performance efficiencies, and we'll be working on that. Other pieces of this goal require that we work with our administrative team to calibrate our understanding of what rigor looks like in the classroom, and to do that by looking at videos and talking about what we see together so we can ensure that we're all picking up on the same cues. And we have been doing that work all year long, but we're going to continue to do it at our March administrators' meeting. We're going to be working with looking at video and actually identifying in small groups what we see, so we can calibrate our progress. We also focused around rigor on looking at the comments that administrators make to teachers after classroom visits, and making sure they're calibrated as well. And we've been doing that work with our principals and directors, and the principals have been doing that work with the vice principals and assistant principals. So I feel like I'm in a pretty good place on that goal, that we are making a lot of headway and a lot of progress from what we thought that we would do at the beginning of the year. The, the second goal I wanted to talk about was about the effective entry and direction setting, and we've been doing pretty well on this goal, too. One piece where I'm a little bit behind is that by December, I was supposed to present to the school committee, into the realm, the findings of my data collection process. We did get, get delayed on that for a couple of different reasons. I have given you some of the data releases, some of the information that we, that you all know that we've shared in, in subcommittee meetings, and especially some of the, the programs that we've looked into, corrections that we made at schools, like the decking at the Beauchamp School, where we created a new entryway that goes into the auditorium area there, that had, that had been unsafe in the past. The Garfield School alarm system, we looked at as another critical repair that we are still in, in the process of. I believe requisitions are going up to the, have gone up to the mayor's office, and we're looking for conversion on those soon. And we're thankful to have the support of the mayor in making sure that happens in a timely fashion. But we're also looking at a, a number of different things. One of the pieces that surfaced in the entry plan was that when we do communication around emergency matters, we're not always communicating with everybody. And one of the places we found a deficiency was communicating with cafeteria staff on what they should do, when we have things like a, some kind of a hold in place, or, or anything of that nature. We tend to talk about those things at faculty meetings, and forget that everybody isn't there, and that we really need to be communicating that stuff to everybody. So the entry planning process has brought some of these different pieces to light, and we've been able to remediate them, and can, will continue to work to remediate, remediate whatever we can as time goes forward. I am due in March to give you, to propose some key strategies for improving student learning and district systems, and I feel like I'm on target, that I'll be able to do that at the March meeting. The next goal was to participate in the superintendent's induction program, which I have been doing. As you know, I have my sixth meeting with that group tomorrow, which I'll be out of district attending. I did miss two meetings because of conflicts in scheduling, but I have kept up with my coach, and met with her regularly to make sure that I'm targeting all the areas that I need to. And I've kept up with my assignments as well, so I can relate to the students who lament homework from time to time. But it needs to be done. Another goal that I had was to maintain momentum during the transition, and I feel like I've done a pretty good job with that. I've been working closely with the principals. We just scheduled a round of meetings with, to meet with them individually, and talk about their own goals, and help them reflect on what they've accomplished, and where they want to focus, and how we can support them in doing the work that they've identified as critical to improving student achievement. So those meetings are scheduled for the vacation, some of them for the vacation week, and some for the week after. But we'll, we'll get those done before the end of February, as the goal dictates. And we're definitely on track to, by late spring, conduct at least three school, three, visits to each school at least three times. We've done, this will be our second round of formal visits that we're doing for our spring session, but we've also visited every other school at least one other time for various reasons, whether it was for spelling bees, or to sit in on school improvement council meetings, or any other reason. Faculty meetings, parent meetings, we've been in every other school at least once each. So between the three of us, we will have actually been in each school at least five or six times before the spring even comes, so that's good. Trying to think. My last goal was FER effective classroom teacher evaluation. And again, that's a piece that we've been working closely with the administrators on, to make sure they're calibrating their feedback that they give to teachers, making sure that they see things the same way, so that the feedback that a teacher gets isn't dictated by who their evaluator, evaluator is. It is still a work in progress. We're not perfect by any means, but we continue to do that work. We have teachers doing collaborative walkthroughs with John Safier through the Making Student Thinking Visible program, which a number of our teachers have taken. And engaging in activities like that, where two people go in and observe something, and then can come out and talk about what they saw, really helps shape different perspectives on, on what we all see, because that's sometimes a challenge in calibration. So we're doing, I feel like we're doing pretty well with that goal as well. And Danielle has also done a lot of work with administrators by looking at the feedback they give, how often are they giving feedback, what kind of feedback are they giving, is the feedback likely to change teacher practice or student performance? And if not, she gives the, the administrator suggestions on ways to improve that feedback, to make it more effective and more useful. So I feel like I'm in a, a good place with my goals. I'm not, I can't say right now that I've achieved them all, but I feel like I am on track to do so before the end of the year, and look forward to reporting as much to you when we get to the end of June. And that actually concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. We have the student school committee member report by Gianni Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I would like to start by saying that the junior class will be hosting the annual dodgeball fundraiser in the high school gym on Tuesday, March 29th, at 6 o'clock. This will be the first year that the junior class will be inviting middle school teams to participate in the tournament. All welcome to attend this community-wide event. Next, I would just like to say that the high school will also be hosting a school showcase in the upcoming months, and we encourage the community to attend and see what we have been working on over the past year. I will have more info to follow in the upcoming weeks pertaining to dates and times. As for the student initiative that I've mentioned in previous meetings, the group is, Student Senate, I meant to mention, the group is finishing up on formalizing our bylaws, and the timeline for submitting the bylaws for approval will be probably the beginning of March, as will need some additional time after February vacation. Also, the restorative justice initiative that I have mentioned before has been merged with the Student Senate, and we are currently in the research and site visit phase, and plan on meeting with Malden High School, who has had an established program for a few years now. The high school has been busy at work with all of these initiatives, and getting students onto these committees within the school to collaborate more with faculty and administration, and we're on a great roll right now. So, yeah, it's great to be back after a long weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Gianni.
Thank you for saying that, Gianni, because there were some students who had different opinions.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of bills for Hill School as recommended by the building school, Building Committee Subcommittee. Mr. Maguire?
First on the list, we have Blanchard Sons, amount of $960. Placks are requested by Revere Public Schools.
Motion to-
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. Maguire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
No.
Mr. Sinella. Ms. Ty.
No.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Second, Concept Art Services LLC, the amount of $5,450. Design five files, print the collage image, drill halls, five panels. So moved.
Second.
Motion to-
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. Maguire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella. Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Consultant invoices, Delco Utilities, Inc., in the amount of $6,320. Invoice number 2337, relocating the fire line to the new Park Ave poles. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. Maguire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mr. Sinella. Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Blanchard Sons, $960. Invoice number 15-7434-91815 for all those plaques. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. Maguire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
No.
Mr. Sinella. Ms. Ty.
No.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Okay, FFNE invoice package number eight, Norfolk Power Equipment, invoice number 51134, $8,800. Purchase order number 00, it's a Tarex DC aerial lift. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferenti.
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Yes.
Mr. Maguire.
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Yes.
Mrs. Sinella. Ms. Ty.
Yes.
Mayor Arigo.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maguire. Next on the agenda is the Subcommittee Reports. Ms. Gravellisi.
Thank you, Mayor Arigo. On February 3rd, we had a Health and Nutrition Subcommittee meeting. We met with Cheryl Cole. At that time, Cheryl introduced her new staff members to the Airmac team. They are Rebecca Kay, the chef assistant, and Director Maureen Cooper, the food location manager. Information was also provided regarding the successful opening of the Hill School, the expanded menu selections, and the tracking of meal participation with the growth of 3% at that school. The introduction of School Dish. It's a new online resource that offers a nutrition calculator for students, parents, and staff to access nutritional information for all school lunch menus. For those of you, if you haven't looked at it yet, it's right on the website. You can actually plan out your whole menu for your child. Our staff members can plan out the whole menu for themselves, all the calculations, nutritional values, calories, so on and so forth. So it's a really great update to the website. I encourage everyone to look at that. Also, we received an update from Cheryl Cole on the Airmac Health and Wellness Grant Opportunities. In October of 2015, Airmac proposed grant opportunities ranging from $500 to $2,000 to recognize and reward the school, individual classroom, or district organization that presents collaborative proposals to engage students in healthy eating, physical activity, or wellness activities. Close to $13,000 of grant money has been awarded to date. The grant applications actually end on March 30th, so if anyone's interested, please try to get that application in. If you'd like, I'll take an opportunity to share with you some of the grants that have been awarded so far. To date, Revere High School, Revere, the Revere High School Community School was awarded $2,000 to fund activities and purchase fitness supplies designated to educate the children in their ESOL adult learners. Also, the Hill School received $1,300 for a Health and Wellness Workshop for grades one and two. The Susan B. Anthony Middle School received $2,000 for a Healthy Living Club. Lincoln Elementary School received $2,000 for a fifth grade intramural after-school basketball program. Sea Coast High School received $1,470 for an herb and vegetable garden. Revere High School received $2,000 for a Life Skills postgraduate transitions, and that's to help students, you know, to gain independent learning life skills after graduation. So that was another great one. And lastly, so far, Revere High School received $2,000 for a Revere High School Girls Basketball Team. So there's a lot of great grants out there, and I encourage anyone interested, contact Cheryl Cole, or if they need that information, contact us here at the school committee. Okay, more great news from Cheryl Cole. Okay, a survey went out. It's called the Student Viewpoint Survey. It was recently launched at the Susan B. Anthony and the Romney Marsh Academy. The purpose of the survey is to gather some data to better assist Airmac to identify where there are opportunities to enhance the programs and services provided by our students, I mean, provided to our students, excuse me. So we encourage all the students to get those in, so it only helps us serve you better. Also, more great news, there has been a master ingredient allergens share file created. That file was shared with the kitchen managers and school nurses. So now they're able to view ingredient labels and allergen information for all products served in our school lunch meal program. And the great thing about that is, you know, if a child has an allergic reaction, instantly at, you know, their fingertips, the school nurses have the availability to, you know, find out right away what, you know, what the child ate for lunch, what ingredients are in there, and if it's a, a reaction to something they ate. So that was another great addition that Cheryl Cole added to her program this year. And that's it for right now, but a lot of great stuff coming from our food service provider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gravellisi. Next item on our agenda is new business. There is no new business.
None.
Next item is late communications. No late communications? Next item is motions. Mr. Secretary.
My very deep voice, my microphone voice. This is a motion made by Stacy Rizzo on behalf of the committee as a whole. A motion's made by Stacy Rizzo, requesting Superintendent Diane Kelly submit two school calendars reflecting the 2016-17 school year to this committee, so we may have ample time to review and be able to vote on it for our March meeting. So moved. I don't think so.
All, all in favor, all opposed. So moved.
So I just, I just wanted to, you know, as you, as you guys know, I did provide two calendars tonight for your review, and, you know, so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Two very good calendars, one with two very different opinions. Shh. Next motion. Motion made by Stacy Rizzo to allow the Revere JRTOC to travel to their competition as presented at the February 16 meeting. So moved.
All in favor, all opposed.
Aye. Another motion to allow the Revere High School Robotics Club to travel to their competition as presented at the February 2016 meeting. So moved.
All in favor, all opposed. So moved.
A motion is made to present the Revere Public Schools' history champs certificates of excellence at the next Revere School Committee meeting in March. So moved.
All in favor, all opposed. So moved.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. What she wanted to add. Do you want to do the spelling bees in April?
Sorry, if I may. There was some confusion about it, sorry. I'd like to add a motion that we award certificates of commendation to the winners of the spelling bees at all six schools, and to the poet laureate, and the winners of the Poetry Out Loud Competition at Revere High School. Certificates of commendation.
All in favor? All opposed. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Next item on the agenda-
Can I just add, according to the history FER, and also with the spelling bee, our students are going on to regionals. Our history FER is March 5th, and it's held at Beverly High School. Great opportunity to see some great work, not only with our students, but all around the area. Also, on Friday, March 11th, our spelling bee students will be going on to Lynn Auditorium, and that begins at 6:00 PM also. So two great events, and we have a lot of students in it to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Step right up.
Name's Ralph DeChico, parent, governing board member from the Paul Revere School. Just a couple of quick comments on, I know the calendar you guys are going to be looking at. Just one thing that I'd like to- 49 Washington Street, Revere, Mass. Just one thing that, that comes to mind that I think should be taken a look at. I don't know what the two calendars are, but I think maybe you also should get some input from the city solicitor, the legalities of some certain, my feeling is that, regardless of the union contracts with the teachers or whatnot, school should be in session on all the holidays, and if they have to take it off, take it off. But I'm not a religious scholar, but a lot of the religious holidays do not start until sundown. So if that's the case, that really shouldn't be affecting a lot of the people for some of the holidays that are on the calendars. So that's something that maybe you want to talk to the city solicitor about, so that there's some hurdles that you won't have to jump through with union- that you won't have to jump through with union problems. That could alleviate a lot of the decisions on whether you have to grant people to be able to take those days off or not. Because I know, and the other thing is to look ahead and see what religious holidays are going to be falling on the school days next year. But like I said, my feeling is, and we did it at the Paul Revere School, and the teachers agreed to it and we had, I believe we had 98% attendance on all religious holidays this year. So, as a pilot, I think that's pretty substantial to look at, even though it's one community school. Second thing that I just wanted to bring up is, I brought it up at the citywide PTO with the school tours and I know you wanted to get the paperwork. And this goes, piggybacks on the school lottery. My feeling is, and a few other parents have the same thing, and I know a decision still hasn't been made on ELT, whatnot, regardless of which way you stand on it and which way it goes. If ELT is there, it's one way. If we do not have the extended day, I'd probably be willing to bet 97.5% that we would not need a school lottery if we do not have the funding for ELT. Because I believe that weighs heavily on a lot of parents' decisions on what schools they send their kids to for middle school. So, that's something else that should be decided. And from what was said back in November and December, we would, we would, we thought we were in the oppression that a decision was going to be made by January. Now, we're in February and we still don't have that decision. I don't have a student that's moving on to middle school, but I think that would alleviate a lot of your problems thinking about a middle school lottery and weighing heavily on a lot of the parents. Those are the two things that I just wanted to bring to the forefront.
Thank you. Thank you, Ralph.
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Kelly.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeChico, for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns and your, and your suggestions. It's always helpful, as you know. One of the reasons we like to have our citywide PTO meetings is because it does give parents a voice and the opportunity to participate in the conversation. And what you've said here tonight, as well as what we've talked about at the PTO meetings, certainly outweighed into the decision-making process without a doubt. So, I want to just make, make sure that you're aware of that and assure you that we do listen. It's not something that we don't hear. Both of the issues that you raise are contentious in the city and we know that. The, the one about the calendar is one about equity and making sure that every day that we call a school day is a true school day. And I, I would say that one of the distinctions between what happens district-wide or what has happened in the past when we went to school on religious holidays versus what happened this year in the pilot at the Paul Revere School, which we're happy to do, by the way, because we did want to get that data and feedback particularly about students more so than the staff. But one of the differences is that the staff did all agree as a group, we're all going to come in. We're all going to come in all of these days and we're not going to stay home for, for other reasons. And so, that made a big difference. It's not an agreement that we've been able to garner district-wide and that's where we face a challenge, where we have large numbers of teachers that don't come in because of a religious day. The kids are the ones who suffer for that because we, as a city, are saying, here's a school day when it really isn't. And our kids lose out because they get that much less education than their peers in other districts where teachers are in session. And as you know from our PTO meetings, and I don't need to go into great detail here, but there, there are reasons why it's different in Revere that are contractual, why these things play out differently in Revere than they do in other cities and towns. But this school committee and the, and the teachers' union have had some discussion around this and, and we, we understand how, how riveting, how important a situation it is for parents, particularly those who can't get time away from work to care for their kids on a random Monday or Tuesday or whatever day the holidays happen to fall on. So, it's definitely something that we're considering and weighing all of the pros and all of the cons on both sides of the argument before a decision will be made. And I know that the school committee is going to do their due diligence in doing the same with the, with the two calendars that they were provided with tonight. Regarding expanded learning time, I just wanted to point out that the budgets for expanded learning time are entirely separate from our school department budget. They're unrelated to foundation budget. It's a separate grant program through the Department of Education. And we know that that, although we had a cut in the budget this year, at least in the governor's version of the fiscal '17 budget, those numbers for ELT have been restored to last year's levels.
Level funded.
So, that's helpful. And again, it's something that we're working with the union to try to figure out whether or not that is a program that we can continue to sustain in Revere or not, especially in light of the other budget challenges that we face. Although this money is entirely different, we have to think about what that looks like across the district, across the board, across all of our schools. So, we're definitely working on both of them and, and thank you for, for sharing your thoughts with us. It's always helpful.
Just the thing that I'm talking about for the, for the calendar that, that with the city solicitor, why I'm saying is, a lot of the holidays, the teachers or whoever can say that the holiday, the holiday is not at midnight.
Mm-hmm.
It would be at sundown and sunset.
Right.
So, that may be something that you can look at for legality issues.
We are definitely aware of that. Yep.
No, 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 no. Not sunset to sunset. Most, a lot of them are sundown to sunset, not sunset to sunset.
We're, we're, we are aware. We have the, we-
I know of only one and I'm not an expert in that.
Yeah. That's why, I'm not a religious scholar, but that's what I've been, that's what I've found.
We, we use a state list that identifies which days would be religious holidays, that one would need to be off of work during the workday to identify those dates. So.
The, the other question that I have, when you say that the, the ELT is a separate fund, but from, from, my understanding is, in order to sustain the ELT for this past year, we had to allocate money from somewhere else to keep it to, to the standings that we were at.
Right.
So, if, if the state is not giving any more money and is still level funded, we've already had to tap into other areas to keep that going. So, how-
So, the state actually has restored the funding. We actually had a cut in funding this fiscal year, FY '16. So, the number from FY '15 went down this year and that's what caused the problem that we had with the budgeting. In FY '17, that has been restored to the FY '15 level. So, with some work that we're discussing with the union that I can't share at this point, we feel like we would be able to budget and, and keep the ELT program in place without using any funds from the K-12 budget. So, that's why we're still considering and that's why, as you mentioned, earlier in the year, we said we wanted to have a decision by January.
Yeah.
This is why we haven't, because new information has come to light. And what we, one thing that we do know and that the research supports is that expanded learning time programs help kids close their learning gaps and, and achieve at higher levels. So, it's certainly not a program that we want to let go of lightly.
So, when you say we, for fiscal year '15, to restore it to fiscal year '15?
Correct.
For fiscal year '15, we still had a deficit to keep the program going.
No, we did not. No. Fiscal year '16, we had a deficit and had to put money in to help to keep the program growing.
So, fiscal year '15 would be enough to sustain fiscal year '17 for ELT with all the spending increases?
With some changes, Ralph. I'm saying it for the fourth time now. We would be able to sustain ELT without using any of the school district budget money. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Next item on the agenda is payment of bills. Motion-
Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right. That was easy. All in favor, all opposed. All right. And last but not least, adjourn, well, last but not least, adjournment. Our next meeting will be March 8th at 6:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.